We'll call our meeting to order for Monday, November 20, 2017. Our first item on the agenda this morning is new councillor business, 2.1, councillor McFadden.
Morning, your worship. Morning, everyone. This is to do with getting the airport extension program on to, into the 18 capital budget. So I move that the runway extension be considered in the capital budget discussions for 2018.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor Javecov. Discussion. Councillor Rogers?
I just wonder why I move it up. It's in the, in the budget, in the five-year budget for the airport, if there's 1.9 million, I believe slated for 2020, in that capital plan. I just wonder what's the urgency to bring it up quicker.
Duncan?
So through your worship, we have a couple items that have come forward throughout the year. And, you know, an option, and I've discussed this with staff and yourself a little bit, your worship, one option is we can, we can tackle these capital requests individually, or if council would like to set a meeting aside where we could bring some information forward, council could have some time to bring forward their requests, and our finance officer can bring some information about our financial position. We could tackle all of these items in one meeting. Something I heard last year, I guess earlier this year in February, we rolled out the first draft budget report, and some of council felt that they didn't have enough time to make some changes, or to add some items, or change some items. So if council wishes, we could create that opportunity this year, you know, within the next, you know, say mid-December, or something like that.
So, and certainly, this is off of the motion a little bit-
Yeah, sorry.
... pertains to them is, to me, the, one thing I want to try and minimize is the impact on staff to do a bunch of work on some initiatives and prepare their reports for council, if there isn't a majority of council willing to support the initiatives that are being brought forward individually by council. And so to me, if we have, and I know that there's a number of items that folks have, would like to have consideration for in 2018, and I think the first step would be to make sure that we have a majority of council willing to support those initiatives in, amongst the entire budget discussions, rather than have direct staff to do a bunch of work, and then there isn't a majority of council who are even willing to support the initiative. And so I kind of like the idea of trying to do something early in December, once we have all of council available to do that. Councillor Javecov?
So does that mean this motion would be moved into that meeting?
Well, I think all of them. It would be my hope that we could move them in and say, first of all, is there a majority of council willing to consider that as a budget item for 2018, for staff to do the work to bring it back for council's consideration in the entire budget process? So yes, I would assume that we would bring back any of them that council would like to consider, and then make sure we got a majority of councillors willing to have administration do the work on them, and then have the consideration in that whole discussion around the budget, both capital and operating, as it may, impact this. Councillor Rog?
Yeah, I agree with that, because just to kind of set the table here a little bit regarding the budget, you know, we've got the, there's a lot of things to be considered that are going to be coming up, and we haven't even heard from staff what the priorities are, because we still got the 17th Street sidewalk, 10th Street Bridge, the water treatment plant, although that's a separate fund, the water reservoir, like just those few projects that, you know, were upwards of $20 million. Then there's the arena, where we had committed to spend $10 million over five years into the arena, so there's probably a couple million more coming out of that. Roads, we got some-
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop, because we do have a whole bunch of budget items, and that's where everybody would be able to have the opportunity to do that. I just, I guess I'm just saying, is there a will for council to do that, rather than get into a full item-by-item and have staff do a bunch of work on those reports when there isn't a majority of council? And let's set a special meeting aside to do that?
Yeah.
We can start right now.
Councillor Parzle?
Apologies for being late. As a grandfather, I have some responsibilities, my late daughter's kids. Yeah, I agree with the, sorry to be late, and I agree with the sentiment here. In hearing about all the capital items that people have, and I have a few, I tell you what might, would be helpful to me, like before we, information we have at this meeting that you're going to organize in December, I used to have a, it was a spreadsheet, I had all the capital items, which year they were scheduled, the estimated costs, the source of funding. And I have to say, whilst I think I'm reasonably on top of things planned for, I'd like to have a hard copy of something before me, of the things that will be continuing from previous years into this year, things scheduled for this year, next year, et cetera, et cetera. And I think there's some new items that, because we're a dynamic community, things happen. I think of flood mitigation as an example. And yeah, I think it would be a healthy thing to have a focused meeting, but I really would like to have prior to that, a big picture thing from staff, just one-liners, estimated costs, source of funding, et cetera.
Sure. And so, to me, the aspect of our 2017 budget, both capital and operating, in terms of what capital projects this councillor Rogers has brought forward, in terms of, there's a bunch of carryover, what's our plan for 18? But my worry is that we overload staff with, everybody here's got some initiatives that they'd like to bring forward, and let's make sure that we don't put staff through a bunch of work, where some thing gets brought forward here, raised, and say, yeah, let's have staff do the report on it, and then it gets to the continent, there isn't even a majority of council that want to support it. So I just think it, I don't want to overload staff in, in terms of doing some of that work, and let's keep it focused on, kind of from that perspective, but I'm good to be guided by your guys' thoughts on. Councillor Javecov, then councillor Schuman?
So, to prepare for that meeting, when would, when would we make submissions?
So I'm, my thought is, and I've looked at the calendar, is I don't want to do it too fast, because I gotta get some time in there, but we don't want to do it by November 20th, but I'm hoping the week of December 11th, if council are available. And so, as long as you guys have two weeks ahead of that to get it into staff, then they can put it together, and then, as well as some of that other material that's being requested, from our 17 carryover and 18 plan, stuff that we absolutely are part of our ongoing five-year capital plan and stuff like that, we can put some of that stuff together, and that gives you the, kind of the bookends around it. But my hope is, councillor Parzle is going to be away for a week, so my hope is if we could do it around that week of December 11th, and we'll plan a three- or four-hour session one morning to do a special meeting of council, just for that purpose. Councillor Rog?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think that once we get the information for the capital projects that we have, you know, we've deferred some to, and then there is some that, reports that we're still waiting to get coming in. One I can think of is the, is the storm, master storm plan, same as the sewage and everything else that we had. So I think that there's going to be a lot of further information, and, and then if you even look at, from our report in 7.2, you know, everything's been flat, and we've had recommendations not to, no new services in past, past budget meetings and stuff. So I'm just thinking, you know, I don't even think we have any money to, for new items. I think we just go back and stick to our plan.
Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, I'm totally in favor of doing what you suggest. I think that it's very reasonable that we sort of organize our docs before we send staff off to do all this work, so.
Thank you. So maybe if we could take then, if council are, and I'm hearing kind of unanimous agreement to the thought that if we take these items today, they're on our agendas, and if we could have a motion that we refer them to that budget meeting on December, the week of December 11th is when we're going to schedule it for, and then these can be brought forward for that meeting for discussion. Councillor Schuman, then councillor Javecov?
Okay, so just a question then. So my item, I'm actually asking for information, costing, that kind of stuff, and so, like I was hoping that that information would come back, so that council has sort of a picture of it before they just broke down curbside recycling.
So, and that's the purpose of this meeting, is for-
So will we have the numbers then and stuff?
So, my, my, I guess my intent is, bring it forward, if there's a majority of council who want to support the initiative of the airport runway extension, the Rotary Lake for consideration, the recycling waste management for consideration, if there's a majority of council, then staff will begin to do that work on, reporting on that, for our budget deliberations as they begin in January, February. Councillor Schuman?
Except that, how can I make a good argument for this, or a good, you know, how can I approach council and say, this is, this is my want, without being able to, like councillor McFadden, for example, votes against curbside recycling because of money, but I would like to know what that is prior to him voting against it because of-
So all we're asking is, is at this point, is not to support it, but ask staff to do the work on it, to bring the report forward for council's consideration during the budget discussion. So not supporting the airport runway extension for consideration in 2018, but have staff bring, do the work, and the report necessary for council to have the information and to make the decision on it. Duncan?
So through your worship, last year, recycling's a good example where it came up. Shelly brought forward a report, I think it was February 6th, and we got directed, staff got directed, to bring back some information, and we needed to have that information back at the beginning of March. I think we had one month. So the intent is, if on December 13th, or 11th, whatever the day is, this moves forward, we'll have considerable more time than last year to look at a couple different options, and provide that for council during the budget.
Councillor Schuman?
Except that, we're going to sit down in this meeting, the same three people will vote for curbside recycling, the same four people will vote against curbside recycling, without understanding the financial implications.
No, okay.
So, go ahead, councillor McFadden.
This meeting, that's what they'll, that's what they're, they'll come back to this meeting with the cost of what you're proposing, and what councillor Parzle is proposing, and what I'm proposing. That's the purpose of the meeting, is that they'll come back with those numbers.
So it's, it's November 20th, we're having this meeting on December 11th, so supposedly then we're giving staff now a month to bring back my numbers?
No, no.
Okay.
Duncan?
So, so through your worship, the intent of, in my mind, and council can change this, the intent of the, the meeting, December, whatever the date is, we'll just say 13th, that's a nice number in the middle of that week, the intent of that meeting is to, to look at all the projects that council would like to bring forward, and, and what council's already committed to, and what that five-year looks like, and what the carryforward looks like, so that you could look at recycling or airports in perspective with all the projects that the city is either doing or not doing, and make some decisions where we want to go. And if council decides at that meeting that we'd like to go into recycling, then we will take staff resources and time, and research those projects, and bring back the best options and possibilities in those projects. If council doesn't have a majority, then we won't work on those projects.
So the information will not come forward?
So I, for me, it's, need a majority of council to support anything, to endorse anything, and for me, it's about, I'm just trying to minimize some of the work that staff are going to be asked to do in the next couple months. We have a lot of new staff, we have a new CFO, and I'm just worried about overloading in terms of doing that. But this, that your guys is, you guys, you're, you guys get to drive the process in terms of what, and how you want to bring forward, and how you want to deal with your budget deliberation. Councillor Parzle?
Yeah, I understand the apprehension, if that's the right word, that councillor Schuman has. And I, I don't know how, with this effort to focus the resources we have on the priorities and the will of council, I respect that and, and support it, but I do want to acknowledge my, a bit of empathy for councillor Schuman's concerns. The same thing applies for everything, every project. I mean, one of the motions that, one of the things, items I'll be putting forward now through this sort of direction to staff, that will be on the agenda, December, whatever, is I believe we need to start saving some money for the flood mitigation work we must do, right? Now, I have no idea what that's going to cost, we had hidden some consultants' reports and stuff, but I do believe it's a major project that's going to, because flooding is going to be more frequent, and it's something we have to try to do something about. But again, when we talk about it in December, we won't have any idea of the costs. So I don't know any way forward, other than what you're proposing.
So councillor Javecov?
I'll make a motion that we-
Well, we got one on the table still, we got this, one of councillor McFadden's that we kind of have headed down a different tangent on. So I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not sure now that we should-
Can I make an amendment to that motion, that we refer it to this meeting in December?
Is that, does that go contrary to the motion? Is that-
Right now I have, you do have it referred-
Okay.
... a second or to refer these items to the first, the week of December 11?
So the-
For discussion. So we just need to, to vote on that motion, the amendment of the original motion to refer.
On 2.1.
Yeah.
Okay, for the discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. 2.2, councillor Rogers, councillor Parzle?
I would like to refer this matter to the upcoming meeting in December for discussion.
Seconded, councillor McFadden. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. 2.3, councillor Schuman?
Yes, I would like to refer this to the upcoming budget meeting.
Seconded, councillor Rogers. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Is there any other councillor business? Sorry, I bounced through there pretty quickly, and I should have given each of you guys a chance if you had other items. Councillor Rogers?
I was, on Wednesday, I was up in Fort St. John Community Development Institute that is partnered with the University of British Columbia. We're doing a presentation on the, on facilitating economic development efforts and the goals in building a stronger, more sustainable community. So there was, Doug Griffiths was a, he's an MLA in Alberta, and I think he ran to be premier at one point, had written a book, and it, the book was, it was, it was 13 Ways to Kill a Community. And, you know, the, it was, it was one chapter that stood out. I could go through all of the chapters, but there was one that stood out, and it was, basically it was the things, what to do and not to do in your community to help, you know, through economic development and everything else. But they did, in chapter three, they talked about, about the youth, and about how to retain the youth in a community, and there was a lot, big discussion about tell your children, or tell your youth in your community in grades 11 and 12, that, yeah, it's great, please go and further your career, but please, you know, come back. Let everybody, let, let those students know that they, it's great to come back. And I think that's important, and we talked about it when we were, when we went through our economic development plan about the youth, and, and, you know, how do you retain people in your community? Because, you know, the people are everything in your community, so you don't really want to lose those people. But to have those people go off and, and get their training and whatever, I think it's really, really important to let them know to come back. And that was one of the recommendations, was that mayor and council go to the high schools and talk to the grade 11, grade 12, and let them know, they do have a voice, they are important to the community, and that, that, you know, we want to see them go away and, but, you know, let them know that there's an opportunity to come back home. And so I had talked to the mayor a little bit, and I was just kind of wondering what council would like to do here. I know what I would like to do, and I would like to have the mayor, and possibly, I'd like to see all of council, go to the high school and speak at an assembly, and let everybody know that, you know, it's, that all of those students that are, that are there, let them know that there are opportunities in the community, let them know that, that they can come back, and they do have a voice. There is a assembly Wednesday, January the 31st, it's the start of a new semester, and it's the start of a new year, and I don't know what the mayor feels about doing this, but would council think that, or the mayor, because I guess you'd be the one that's doing all the speaking, because you are the guy, just going in and doing a half an hour conversation with the students, letting them know how great our community is, and the opportunities that exist currently in our community.
So thank you. I'm always good to go to the schools, anytime, and I don't think we need council's direction for us to do that, and so if you got the contacts, I'd be happy to go with you. Or set it up and, yeah.
I'll set it up, and I'll, I'll just put it out to everybody, and I'm, I'm thinking that we just leave it open for, if, you know, all of council wanted to go with the mayor, it just, I think it's just a matter of support, besides, I have to remember that these people are going to be voting in a couple of years, too, and that's, that's important as well, to engage the students in, in local government. One thing that was disturbing, that I had just recently found out, was they don't have a student council in it this year. They used to have a student council over there every year, and this year they don't. And I'd like to, I'd like to ask them why they don't.
Good, thank you. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so on behalf of the mayor, last week I attended, in Fort St. John, the MLA Energy Literacy Roundtable that MLA Dan Davies put on. It was very well attended by industry, and Mike Bernier was there, Bob Zimmer was there. There was presentations by Clean Energy BC, by CAP, by independent contractors and business associations, and it was basically just a full day of sort of brainstorming ideas around how to educate people who aren't from our region on what the industries are up here, and how to help people from outside of the region to understand better what we do and how we do it, and innovations that we're using, and those kind of ideas. So it was a really good, really good session, and according to Dan Davies, it's just the first session. He will be doing something else in the future. So it was, it was good to attend, and very well attended by others.
Thank you so much for attending, on my behalf. I know I got invited, and I wasn't able to go, so I appreciate you attending. Any other councillor business? Anybody? Thank you. We'll go to minutes. Minutes for our regular meeting of council for November 6th for adoption. Councillor Rogers, councillor McFadden. Any errors or omissions in the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Business arising from those minutes? Anything? 5.1, we have correspondence. We have an email from Bruce Wallston, Minister of Jobs, Trade and Technology, regarding the 2018 Open for Business Award nomination process. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so I think that we've been doing some really good stuff in this city around being open for business. I know you work very, very hard, wearing your economic development hat, and Shaley works very, very hard with the Love Dawson Creek, and I think we should nominate ourselves. So I'll leave that.
Thank you. Seconded, councillor McFadden? I agree. I think honestly the work effort and energy that all of council put into trying to ensure that we demonstrate that, that it's a positive, and why shouldn't we nominate ourselves for Open for Business, if that's the criteria? Any discussion? Any further comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. We have a letter from Jaren Neufeld, CPA from Santa Rose Bone and Grondel, regarding our interim audit. Councillor McFadden?
For information.
Seconded, councillor Schuman. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. We're a little bit ahead of our delegations, so we're going to move to reports. No, I see we've got our delegations here, and although we're a little bit ahead, let's do our delegations, just to make sure that we give council the opportunity to discuss the reports and the strategic plan. We'll have some discussion, so I want to make sure we don't have our delegations wait longer. So our first delegation, 6.1, we have Nicole Palfy in attendance, from the Dawson Creek Mayor, regarding the 2017 Reader's Choice Awards. Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning.
Welcome. Good to have you here.
I'm going to come up to the-
Please.
That's where you're supposed to come. Speak into the mayor's breast or something.
Good morning, everyone. It's that wonderful time of year again, where I get to give kudos to those who've done a job very well done in our community. The annual Reader's Choice voting closed in mid-October, and the results are in. It will be in the paper on the November 30th, and I have the pleasure of presenting five or six of them this morning. So I have two that are not able to be in attendance, so we'll just mention those first. The People's Choice Award for Best RCMP Officer, once again this year, was Raymond Jones.
Yay!
And maybe we can see if we can make sure that we get them into council and give them their award someday.
Okay. And, and the best firefighter this year, for the first time in my recollection, is Marcel Capell.
Yay!
Sure.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask Chantay to come up. Chantay is going to accept on behalf of the City of Dawson Creek, the best place to walk, the Dawson Walking Trails.
Yes!
That should be the, yeah, that's a great town.
And the best place for a picnic is King Park.
Yay!
How do I get these?
You're the boss.
What class is one they came from this morning? Is Dylan?
Somewhere. I think Alex just went to get one.
Okay, we'll do this one first. And the best civic leader is Dale.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
We're missing them?
We started early, so we're missing them.
We started early.
Gives the award for the best mayor in town?
Best civic leader. Actually, there were a lot of votes for Catherine, so, and there were about 300, 400 votes this year, so.
Oh, good.
I always figured it was just six for him, really honored.
It's almost normal with people who voted in the election.
Like the 300?
Phil, can I ask you to come forward? I have the pleasure of presenting, very longtime friend. Best city employee this year is Bill Darkey.
Yay!
Congratulations, Phil. Congratulations.
Thank you, and thank you to all the voters.
Thank you, Nicole.
We have three or 400, as I said.
Wow. Thank you guys for doing this again this year. It's a great opportunity for people to express that appreciation to all the great businesses and people in our community, and we really appreciate you guys taking the initiative to do that.
You're very welcome.
And if you've ever filled them out, you know it takes a couple hours for them to-
Thank you.
Best mayor.
I always just look at that.
6.2, Brandi Kennedy from Adoptive Families wasn't able to be here today, but we do have a proclamation, and I'm wondering if, if we don't do it now, it's going to be the end of November when we do it, and it is, November is Adoption Awareness Month, so I'd like to take the opportunity to read the proclamation and sign it, so that they have it.
Pretend you don't see someone.
Whereas, "Adoptive families in British Columbia provide the love and support of a permanent family. And whereas the government of British Columbia wishes to recognize the care, compassion, and unselfish commitment of British Columbia adoptive families. And whereas there continues to be a need for adoptive families to nurture the growth and development of children, especially those with special- development of children, especially those with special needs because of age, physical, mental, or emotional disabilities, and sibling groups. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of November 2017 as Adoption Awareness Month in Dawson Creek. And we'll make sure to get this to them and express our appreciation for the work these guys do to provide a home for children, right? How amazing is that? Our next delegation, six point three, weren't able to be here this morning, so we'll, six point three, we have Jenny Snyder, Michael Dionne, and Pamela Morrison from the Dawson Creek Municipal Public Library in attendance. Good morning, good morning, good morning, and welcome.
Best of times, it was the worst of times. We usually come in December, and again, Michael Dionne, Chair of the Library Board, Jenny Snyder, current Head Librarian, Pamela Morris, as of January 1st, Head Librarian. We usually come with pictures and numbers in November, December each year to let you know things are going in the library, which are going well, so we're going to keep this presentation short and sweet, like somebody else we know. Jenny's last day is December 31st. After thirty-five years of the library's forty-five years, I might add, Jenny has finally retired, so we wish her all the best. This Sunday, from two to four at the library, we're having a, again, it's all we can squeeze out of Jenny, she's not looking for any sort of heroics or any, any big fuss, but we're having a little get-together at the library from two to four. Jenny has promised that she will read Stephanie's ponytail one last time. If people like to come, we'd love to see you, and we'd like to thank Jenny for all her time and effort. I know for myself, this board member's been fantastic, and we wish her all the best in the future.
Thank you, Michael. So, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to say, so, let's just move Jenny out. Pamela Morrison?
Not so fast, mister.
For thirteen years. And three years ago, she started on a path, taking her library technician course, which she is two months away from completing.
Four months, two courses.
Four months, two courses.
Yeah.
Proud to announce that we've offered Pam the position as Head Librarian. She's accepted. So starting January 1st, Pam will be the new library, and we look forward to bigger and better things. We're going to carry on, carry on.
Thirty-five more years?
Maybe. Well, I don't know.
I think Jenny was probably thirteen years or so in when you started moving up the ladder as well, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're suppressing it there. That's about it.
Michael, thank you.
The floors look fantastic. They've been redone. Could not be happier. All that's worked out really well for us, so it's been another great year at the library. We're looking forward to another good year, and thank you for your continued support.
Michael, thank you. And as always, the library is one of those kind of cornerstones of a community that sometimes doesn't achieve the awareness and recognition that it should, and have a vibrant facility that provides that opportunity in a community. And so we really appreciate the work that you guys have done from the board in terms of continuing to keep the vibrancy alive in the library, and it's really evident that that's the case. The library isn't always just books, it's people. And so we've had great people, and we're really excited to see Pam taking over the new role of our Head Librarian. And obviously, the wish for Jenny and Bob to have a happy, happy, long, healthy retirement. And you work hard all your life to get to that point where you get to say, "Thank you," and we're going to move on to the next stage, whatever that is. But we really sincerely, on behalf of council, want to wish you a long, long, happy, healthy life, and we sincerely appreciate, obviously, the passion that you've demonstrated day in and day out to our library, because it's the passion that is success, and it's the passion that's kept it alive. And so we really appreciate that, that you've given to our community. And so I just have a small token right now of our appreciation to Jenny to say it's appropriate that we need to have a book, a local book, to Jenny as a small token today, and thank you so much for everything, everything that you've done.
Thank you.
And for our community, and it's with sadness and it's with appreciation that we say, "Congratulations and all the best."
Smile!
Thank you. And we'll see you on Sunday.
Yes, see you then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. See you Sunday. See all of you Sunday.
Yes.
You too.
Delegation six point four, we have Kit Fast from the Dawson Creek Watershed Society in attendance regarding a riparian management and wildlife monitoring program. Good morning, Kit.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks to Mayor and Council for allowing me to speak once again before council. What I'm here for today is ask for a letter of support from Mayor and Council for in-kind time and services from city staff in support of basically a two and a quarter year program along the creek. In a rush to get this on the agenda for today, I didn't provide enough information for you to make a decision. I met with Caleb Boyd from the Watershed Program on Friday and provided a more detailed budget, and I can speak to city staff to go over the details of what that would entail. So today, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the program, and we'll go from there. So this is a two-year program for work along the creek inside city limits, is funded through the Environment and Climate Change Canada Federal Branch and their Eco Action Community Funding Program. The federal money they're offering is forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars until the spring of 2020. And our in-kind request from the city is twenty-eight thousand, three hundred over that same timeframe. This project builds on the city objectives along the walking path, just recognized today as the best place to walk, et cetera, et cetera. And it builds on the idea of the green ribbon mentioned in the OCP running through the heart of the community. All the, underlying all of the activities that we're proposing is an idea that we need to collect more data that's relevant to maintaining the creek's watershed health into the future.
Sorry about that.
No problem. I'm just going to introduce, in case you don't know, this is Inga Jean Hansen. She's Vice President of the Watershed Society and is a local wildlife biologist, and basically the person who put together the proposals, so she actually knows more about it than I do.
So Kit was just, he was just killing time.
I was just killing time.
Keep talking, keep talking, she's almost here.
That was awesome.
I actually don't have any time. So I'll just, I'll do the outline, and then Inga Jean can speak to some of the specifics. Again, the idea is that we've done a lot of stuff along the creek, along the creek, doesn't walk the pathway, and we've done work in the past with education through the city in cooperation with the city. This is more based on having a scientific background, people involved with scientific background, and actually collecting data, information that's, that the city can use in the future to maintain the health and improve, and include things like flood management. So the items listed in the goals of the project are to map the creek based on the Streamkeepers modules. Couple summers ago, in cooperation with Chelsea and the Watershed Program, we brought up someone from Vancouver to do the Streamkeepers Program, so that we can incorporate that into our own programming. And so we can take the model that they use in the south and adapt it to make it relevant to the actual creek and the rivers in our area. Because we're actually physically surveying the creek, we can collect the information about where, you know, people have been dumping garbage. We can, for the flooding, flood management, we can identify places that are slumping and actually photograph them, and go back the next year and actually look again and see what's changed. We have a plan for re-vegetating part of the creek, tree planting for bank stabilization and bat nesting habitat improvement. The tree planting includes, federal money includes seventeen thousand, five hundred towards the trees and the vegetation, and five thousand towards protecting the value of trees from beaver, from the beavers. We're developing long-term monitoring sites for wild equality, bird and bud acoustic monitoring. We want to explore more of the fish and minnows that are in the creek. Through the bridge construction on the fifteenth, we realized that there's actually quite a few species of minnows and fish in the creek. This would include EDNA sampling. Inga Jean can speak to that. I have no idea. And throughout all this, it's raising public awareness of the watershed and ecosystem health, and promoting the green ribbon as an important part of the community. This would be through signage and publicity. And we want to revisit a summer youth program based on the watershed. We've run that through the, in the past, through the Parks and Rec Departments as a cost recovery program, one of their summer camps. Some of the people that are involved in it are Inga Jean. So she is a wildlife biologist who was born and raised in Dawson Creek area, Vice President of the Watershed Society, and is currently working with the federal?
Provincial.
Provincial Ministry as a biologist. Brian Patterson is a registered professional biologist based in Aris, and he's had approximately seven years' experience in bad acoustic monitoring. Again, Inga Jean can speak to that. And Jared Hobbs is a professional biologist and wildlife photographer, and he's been dedicated to the sampling technique of EDNA for the last couple of years, and he would be coming up to help us with that program. And I think this is, part of this, having somebody like come up to this area is that you're increasing the local knowledge base and expertise of the people that are actually living here. So I don't know if I can turn that over to you a little bit?
I think you did a really good job.
Just to speak, I think, more of the science and then the reaction to the program.
Sure, yeah. Just a couple of interesting pieces. I've learned you guys know that, seeing Tasha Sargent growing up, or the Sargent family. Tasha now works for Environment Canada and was involved in reviewing this program. She stepped back saying, you know, "I know the people, I can't, conflict of interest," but she heard that after we were approved, she heard everyone comment how excited they were for this project, because this program typically never sees people applying from north of Vancouver and Toronto. So they were very excited to see this caliber of project coming up in the north. And the, just a couple of the kind of science sides, that we will be blending into the youth camp, so exposing them as well to the natural resource management techniques, and some really groundbreaking ones, such as EDNA, which just stands for environmental DNA, and it's a technique where you can just sample the water, and you can figure out which fish you have. So the goal is to bring Dawson Creek as well back to the potential for just small sports fishery, even if it's just the youth on the creek doing it, to find out if with that flood, we've lost a couple of those hanging culverts, which is good for the fish. Are we bringing sports fish back into the Dawson Creek area? That's what the EDNA sampling will do, compared to down by Pouscoopie River, and then upstream into the town area, to see if we're, if we're getting those sports fish, and you can just identify the DNA from the water. The government that I now work for, the Ministry of Forestlands, Natural Resources Operation and Rural Development, are very excited about this course being brought here, and are going to contribute to some extra work being done while it's here, because they're also going to get to run through some of their staff through the program, because it's a, like I said, fairly groundbreaking technique. Jared Hobbs is also committed to doing some wildlife photography while he's here, that he'd be willing to share with the city. He's been featured in Canadian geographic magazines as well as many others. And lastly, the bad acoustics, which is the tree planting, will go hand in hand with the BC Community Bat, city designation of a bat-friendly community. We'll be looking at the acoustics of which bats we have on the creek, and then looking to how we can enhance that habitat, which works for many species, but gearing it towards bat-friendly trees, such as cottonwoods, which we know the beavers like to take down. So replanting them, because they're often not thought of when tree replanting happens.
And just as a general comment for the community and for you, is that in the arts and in progress like this, what I'm hearing is that there is an interest to recognize underserved communities, that's what they kind of call it. So northern communities, rural communities, when you're applying for arts, when you're applying for programs like this, they're recognizing that in the past, the money has gone to urban centers down to the south. So there is an opportunity moving forward to apply for more money, have innovative projects, have them recognized, and actually supported, superficial integral funding.
Thank you. Thank you both for coming in this morning and giving us a presentation on this topic. So first, Counselor Parzal, and then Counselor Schuman?
Yes, well, I am excited by this. Being a former biologist myself, it's always, always excites me when we see we're enhancing natural habitats and so on. Thanks to staff, I learned that in one, in another progressive community, that in their, we have capital assets, but they also have put a value on their, on our natural assets, such as this. I think I have the right expression. I'm sure staff will jump in with the correct expression, but that intrigues me as well, that a dollar value is put on that, I believe, and the maintenance of it and its enhancement of it to mitigate things such as floods, as well as diversity of nature and so on. So I think that's a bit of a paradigm shift for me that I had, that staff presented to me, and I think we, when we look at projects like this, we need to think about it as an asset. It has not only an aesthetic value, but it also has a monetary value to perhaps naturally mitigate some things. And the question, you know, Kit mentioned of it, about flood control, about how, how the marshes and that can serve as a, as some mitigation to rapid rises in the water levels and so on. For any rate, staff may want to add to or correct something I've said here of the right terms, but I think it's an interesting concept that we look at this as, on the same power as a capital asset. It's a natural asset that we need to maintain, manage, and augment where there's difficulties.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, well, thanks for coming today, you guys. I've missed a few watershed meetings, being out of town and such, but as always, you're up to really great things. And so I just want to clarify, so we're looking for a letter of support for this grant, and we're going to include our, our contribution to this program would be just in-kind work through our watershed program that we have going on.
It would involve other departments. So for instance, planting and locating of the trees would be through the horticulturists from the city. For the youth program, it'd be through the Parks and Rec Summer Camp Program, and then fencing. And fencing, fencing would also involve some city time to help with that. And then, as in the past, the Streamkeepers Program of surveying the creek. In the past, that's been supervised by, it would have been Chelsea at the time, and Eucaterina, and that enabled us to use city insurance to cover volunteer time. That might have to, I think that'll have to change a little bit. We'll have to get our own insurance in the watershed, so that we're not tied to time so directly.
Good. I just wanted to clarify, make sure everybody understood.
And we're happy to talk to staff to nail that.
Yeah. Well, under mayor's business, we'll have to vote on this, so make sure everyone's clear on it. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? The one thing I was just, as I was thinking about among the committee, the Peace Williston Advisory Committee, and it's a committee made up of communities represented and impacted by the Williston Reservoir. And there was, there's some grant money available through the Williston BC Hydro. And I don't know if you've looked at that as another opportunity for some funding, but it seems to me that there might be some stuff in there that might, might fit in.
I've applied for it before for various things, and Dawson Creek is included for sure in that. And yeah, it's been great. They really, I mean, potentially the youth program could see it. It is very focused on getting community members involved. Yeah, up to $2,000.
Anyway, just.
It's a good one, yeah. Yeah, and it's very fast turnaround, too. It's nice.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? Thank you, guys. We appreciate you coming in. We'll bring it back under mayor's business where it'll be dealt with by council.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're nine twenty-one. Do you want to take a five-minute, six-minute break before we go back into reports? So we'll adjourn for five minutes. On the agenda, we're back into item seven, report seven point one. We have report number seventeen one seven six from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding our strategic plan. Councillor Parzal?
I'd like to move the report seventeen dash one seven six from the CAO, the City of Dawson Creek Strategic Plan, two thousand, two thousand, two thousand fifteen to two thousand eighteen we received. Further, council directs staff to hire Jan Enns' communication to facilitate a public engagement process for remaining fiscal responsibility and sustainability strategies prior to the completion of the OCP. Further, the council approved the attached updated strategic plan two thousand fifteen, two thousand eighteen document.
Thank you. Second? Councillor Jevkoff, discussion. Councillor Parzal?
First, I maybe shouldn't do this, but I have to say I totally admire Jan Enns and her work. And there's been other people here who've presented and worked for the city from outside that I could equally admire. So I have absolute confidence in her. I was, I was impressed with her work with the strategic safe water project.
Shorewater.
Shorewater, thank you. Shorewater. And we did, through the work of staff and Jan, transmit a lot of information over a period of time to the public, and she has a lot of expertise in communication. And I sincerely believe that staff cannot do this, not because of their incapability, but because of other work. They do need this lift, if I can use that expression, from an outside source. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Seven point two, we have our preview assessment role, report seventeen one seven seven.
Yes, so did I.
Councillor Schuman?
So I would move report number seventeen one seven seven from the Chief Financial Officer regarding the 2018 Preview Assessment Role we received for information.
Thank you. Second, Councillor Parzal, discussion. Councillor Rogers?
I think in the report it says Adam was committed to a bit of a verbal on that. Is there anything he wants to add?
Sure. Duncan?
Yes, so through your worship, Adam, if Adam could walk council through a little bit, there's a lot of information here, and it's going to set up a big chunk of that budget process, so I think it would be a good idea.
Excellent.
Morning, Adam.
Sorry, Adam. So there's a big disclaimer right at the start. The preview assessment role is a preview. It is BC Assessment's best guess at this point in time, what will be expected for the completed and revised. So take that into mind. This is just a picture, an idea, good possibility. Typically, from your preview, you will see decreases. You don't normally see increases in assessment. So as we can start with that, we already have a decrease from last year's assessment. The housing prices have leveled off, decreased slightly, which is, you know, if you look at the residential assessment, it's the majority of, of the assessment, and that's what we want to be taxed on. So it is not expected to have additional tax revenue from growth in construction or growth in assessments. That has over the past five years funded the city quite well due to the growing of the town. That has slowed down. There was a significant change in that business line, and that's due to a number of larger businesses putting in arguments to BC Assessment that their properties are overvalued, and they were approved this year. What that will do for our composition of our assessment is key. Zero charge taxes at different rates to different types of classes. Therefore, if our business class falls, it will affect the taxes disproportionately to that same change in a residential account. Same with, same with industry. So those are items to keep in consideration, is the overall assessment only fell by point six percent, but the effect it will have on the tax base is a bit heavier due to the areas that change. So we estimate like a one point four percent negative effect on our overall tax, tax take.
That's the two hundred and eleven thousand?
Yeah. And those are estimations, and those are based strictly on last year's tax, with no other adjustments done. That's, you know, we take last year's assessment and replace it with the preview, and that will be safe.
So am I safe to say that that two hundred and eleven thousand decrease? And then with the inflationary costs that go with that, that we've had, that will occur over the year, like with the statement that, that we had had a couple of years ago that was basically no new services, is that still applicable? Or is it, this indicates to me that there's definitely going to be, unless council changes the way we're spending money, it looks like there's going to be a tax increase?
So wait a minute. This is, this assessment role indicating what's happening with the assessment? It doesn't have anything to do with what decision council makes with respect to how they're going to allocate the budget in terms of new services, less services, more revenue, less revenue? This is just the assessment role? It wouldn't be fair to Adam to say, based on this, we're going to have no new services.
Okay. So that'll be?
That's in our budget deliberation. Councillor Parzal?
Adam, there's math, right? And then there's new math, and then there's creative math. So help me with one line here. The decrease in value of the business class properties can be attributed to reduction in folios and a decrease in the average value of folio. No problem. Total business folios have decreased to nine hundred and seventy-three from nine hundred and eighty-one in two thousand and seventeen. This is a decrease of fourteen. Can you help me? Where did that figure fourteen come from? Change in the two? And so nine hundred and eighty-one to nine hundred and seventy-three is fourteen?
That number isn't correct.
It is eight, right?
Yes.
Okay. Fine. I just wondered if there was some other data incorrect? Not, don't get this, don't take this the wrong way at all. I just wondered if there was something I was missing. There's some other source data that's wrong. But anyway, so it's eight, right? Rather than fourteen? Okay, so, and again, this might be out of order. I just wondered, which businesses have moved out of town? There's eight, there's eight, right, supposedly? Or there's been some consolidation?
So, and then I'm assuming that would be, you know, Duncan, maybe you guys can?
Sorry, so you'd like to know what businesses?
Yeah, there's eight, eight fewer businesses.
Yeah, I don't know that, sorry, through your worship, I don't know that we get a list, Adam, of the businesses. We just get the statistics.
No, it's all knowledge basis.
Yeah, I'm not familiar.
There was one water hauler company of some significance moved out of town, and they look closed in Fort St. John.
But, but these would be folios. These would be properties that have either burned down, torn down. The Crestiator was torn down, so there's a removal of a folio.
Folio, yes. Yeah, maybe it's not actual.
It's not a business that's left? It's a, it's a property that no longer has an improvement on it, but?
Thanks. Thank you.
I have one question, and it's major industrial and light industrial are, major is assessed at twenty-one million, and light industrial is assessed at fourteen million? Is that correct? So those would be LP, Air Liquide, Ferris, Perish and Beckler? I'm assuming would, those would be the types of business that would fall within light industrial, heavy industrial?
Because it's going to be?
Yeah.
Yes. So major industrial is you take raw materials and do a lot of change to them to create a product. Light industrial is you take semi-already processed materials and change it to make an end product. But those are the numbers that were provided from BC Assessment to those values.
Okay.
The methodology of assessing industry is different than a house. It is not based on market value. It's based on future earning potential from that site. It's a different methodology.
Okay. It just seemed to me a little bit out when I saw those, because you see LP doing a hundred and twenty million dollar renovation, capital project to renovate that facility. And in total, our total folio value of heavy and light industrial is thirty-one million. So it just seems strange to me, and I wasn't understood that. A clarification in terms of how they're assessed on the folios is helpful. Thank you.
Assessment's always a year behind.
But still. That's just the renovations to that facility.
We won't see that until that project's finished in any usually time.
But as Adam's explained, it won't be based on the assessed value of building like a residential or like a commercial property. Further comments, further questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Seven three, we have report seventeen one seven nine from the General Manager of Development Services regarding a request for quotations. Councillor Schuman?
I would move report number seventeen one seven nine from the General Manager of Development Services regarding a request for quotations for the twenty seventeen forty-two for a municipal tractor to be received. Further, that staff be authorized to lease one twenty seventeen municipal tractor from Williams Machinery for a three-year term for a monthly cost of three thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents plus GST.
Thank you. Second, Councillor McFadden, discussion. Councillor Jevkoff?
I just wondered with leasing it, after we pay the hundred and eleven thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars for the lease fees, I assume we don't own the machine. It goes back to the company. Is that correct?
It's through your worship. Yes, typical lease, there will be a residual amount owing, and then in three-year term, we'll have the opportunity to, to give that vehicle back or to buy it out or look at a new, a new unit at that time.
So is there, is it common that on a lease of this nature, that there are conditions that would apply after the lease is completed where there's a bunch of added expenses for, for example, for damage or whatever, more hours or that type of thing?
Yes, so through your worship, yeah, typical lease agreements will have penalties if you go beyond a certain amount of hours or if there's excessive wear and tear. Our hope is that, going through this, is that we're able to, to flip these units more often, because what we were finding is that we were hanging on them too long and there was excessive costs in maintenance. So we have a pretty firm handle on how many hours that we use these units in a year, so we would have built that into, into that lease.
Thank you. We have an equipment pool that we allocate each month for replacement of equipment, and so does this, by leasing, does that change how we manage that equipment pool at all? Duncan?
So through your worship, and maybe I'll flip this over to Adam. Yeah, go ahead, Adam, with the equipment pool.
Yes, it would. It actually makes the estimations of the cost of running the equipment easier because we have direct leasing cost, and we know at the end of that three-year term what that cost will be. So instead of buying a machine outright and estimating the total life of that piece of equipment and the cost over the life of it to determine what your monthly charge-out rate is to fund that piece of equipment using the leasing method, we have more accurate figures to cover those estimations in future costs.
Thank you. Further questions, further comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Bylaws, anything? Mayor's business, so obviously we just completed the World Under Seventeen Men's Hockey Challenge, and from everyone's account, I think, that we've heard and saw and success of the tournament overall in terms of sponsors, ticket sales, players, parents, fan appreciation. It was all very, very successful, and we will see the final, I think, outcome in the coming months as our organizing committee and team start to roll up the finals of it, both in terms of us, the impacts for us individually, as well as for Encana Event Center and how that. But, you know, real congratulations go out to everybody from the organizing committee to the volunteers, to everybody who helped make it a huge success. And again, the finals were evident in terms of having the Encana Event Center full of people, and it looked so good on TSN once again. And getting national attention to your community is unbelievable how positive that is for us and speaks to that whole value, I think, of why event and sport tourism is so important to us considering moving forward in terms of how we leverage that facility for us to benefit us in the long term. And we had so many great interactions from Hockey Canada. Vice President of Oilers Entertainment was here for a day and a half and looking at our facility and looking at what our community has in terms of opportunities. And so it's all of those things that go on when you host this that are kind of invisible at the, during the event, because it's all the focus on the hockey that's being played on the ice, but the impact to our community was far, far bigger than that. And then all the other things in terms of legacy were the Dreams Come True Program, where Hockey Canada has a half a million dollar, I think, a grant from the NHL where they outfitted and completely outfitted these young kids with hockey equipment and paid their registration for hockey. And there was twenty, I think twenty-two or twenty-four kids from Dawson Creek and Fort St. John that were given the opportunity to be completely outfitted in new hockey equipment, and the hockey dads and program participants were there helping these kids get dressed on Saturday morning. And I was there kind of watching them get outfitted in the morning, and a little guy stood up after he got all his equipment on and stood up in his new skates, and he looked down, and he almost was, it was unbelievable to see this little guy who was like Christmas for him. You know, you almost want to cry when you see that kind of an impact. And that's kind of the legacy of how these events can benefit our community in so many ways. Becky Keller, in the world hockey championship female participant competitor, was there running the female jamboree. And up in Fort St. John, the IP program with three or four hundred kids on the ice. And it was just on and on and on in terms of how many amazing opportunities were for our community and for our kids in our community and build our quality of life. So huge thank you to all of them who helped put that on for our community. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I agree with you. Yes, I agree with you. And of course, your, your comments, they either differ to me verbally or I read them or something about those kids from the Northwest Territories.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about those.
Very impactful.
Yeah.
And I think again, another statement you made was about the fact that the people, adults or the organizers up there realizing that they are an hour and a half or two hours closer to this facility than they, than the one they were going to in Edmonton. So, yeah, that has repercussions. The question I have, and it's, it's one that's looking to the future and it looking to budget. My assumption is that the, I'm going to call it the paradigm shift as it relates to tourism and trying to focus more on events tourism that, that brings people here for events as well as enables our community's members, both city and our rural neighbors to take part in, is going to be facilitators through the funding envelope because obviously the city contributes financially to have some seed money, if I would say, with like with the provincial government and the regional district and so on, and Saddle Hills County, which is all great. It seems to me that we should be budgeting for that within that envelope on a regular basis because I'm hoping that we can have this event here on a, I don't know, every two, three, four, five years, but we should be setting aside money for this or so that we have capacity to bid on it and we don't go looking for the money. We've set it aside because if we want this to be, we've got this great physical asset. We want to maximize its use and potential. Sometimes we have to seed things to help make things happen, but we should budget for it within some either existing money, which is what I prefer, and it's there and then the management team know that they, we don't have to go scrambling looking for money. We can do it.
And I think the, the analysis of some of the events this year that they've done is hopefully will give us some of that data for us to be able to consider and then start to be more strategic about how we invest in event and sport tourism under that tourism overall envelope of what we do and how we understand that. So I think that's, 18 will be a really, really transitional year for us, I would assume, in terms of how now we start now having experienced this event twice, the positive impact on us, how do we build upon that? And then how do, how are we strategically dealing with event and sport tourism under that? So I completely agree with you, but I think that'll be counsel to make that decision once we get some of that data back from, and they did the economic impact tourism, did it again on this one, and we're waiting for four or five of those events. So hopefully we get that information and put it forward. I know that Hockey Canada are really interested in, and Barry will bring that back to us in, I would assume, the coming months with respect to leveraging this community, this region, this facility for future events and what that looks like and how that unfolds, I think, will be a really positive discussion for counsel to have. We had the wrap-up on Friday or the, kind of the TransCanada Tower Birch did their final kind of overview of the Tower Birch project. And just kind of wanted to speak to, it's completed, it's in place and underway and, and so they just wanted to kind of give a little bit of a wrap-up to some of the contractors and the public in terms of how the project went and man-hours and total spend and how it was impacting the community. And TransCanada, they did a very good job of it in terms of overviewing it, and it was a very successful project from their perspective. I think they had 1,000, 1,100 people employed at the height of construction and that was evidenced in our community when all you had to do was look around and see traffic and hotels and restaurants and everything. The community was very, very busy and that was a big part of it. So just want to extend our appreciation. I use this as an example, in January of 16, when they came here and said, "We're going to be building this big pipeline project and it's going to come in 2017 and we're not going to be living in a camp. We're going to have our employees living in town and in our hotels." Things were tough in Dawson Creek in 16. It was slow and quiet and it was a real breath of kind of optimism for the community. So really appreciate how that unfolded and how successful it was for Tower, TransCanada and for their partners. The Remembrance Day ceremonies were held again on November 11th and it was a little bit awkward for me, I think for all of us, a little bit from that perspective of having the finals of the World Under 17 Hockey Challenge taking place the same day. There was nothing we could do about that. That was the schedule that was put forward and partly because of an international event. But we attended and I attended and later wreath on behalf of the city at the Remembrance Day ceremonies and attended the Senatath and spoke on behalf of our community and recognizing our veterans and our legion and our air cadet squadron and all of the folks of how important that message about us supporting our veterans is. And I apologize to anybody that thinks we didn't do that publicly or sufficiently, but certainly it's an important day and we all take that seriously. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so on behalf of yourself as acting mayor, I was able to go to Central Middlesbrough, Central Campus to speak at their Remembrance Day service and, and to say, like, those kids were so respectful. Like they sat quietly. I mean, it's, it's a big room full of a lot of teenagers and they sat quietly, respectfully. You could have heard a pin drop in the, you know, two minutes of silence and it was, it was really, really a nice service. Yeah.
Thank you for going. Thank you for attending. Appreciate it. The last item, we had Kit Fast here from the Dawson Creek Watershed Society and requesting a letter of support. Duncan, can you tell me, have you guys had a chance or did you see this before and do you have a chance to cost it out? Go ahead.
Through your worship, Thursday's Christmas tree light-up, did you want to talk about that before or we could jump into this?
Yeah, no, let's do this one first. I forgot about Christmas tree light-up.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
I scratched it off before I got there.
Save the best for last.
Save the best for last, yeah. So Kevin and Shante have had an opportunity to, to understand what the request is. It is an in-kind request, which is really city expertise and some of our staffing, but Kevin, maybe just fill counsel in?
Sure, through your worship. So with the watershed side of it, it definitely sounds like something that we've done in the past and that we would likely continue to do in the future anyway. So, you know, working with classes and, and whatnot. So I don't, that doesn't seem to be an issue from, from our side. The tree planting would be seeking expertise with our horticulturist. There may, they've got the, the funding to do the, to get the supplies, the trees and the resources. They may need some assistance, but again, it doesn't sound too terribly onerous. They talked about fencing, which would be fencing around these new planted trees. Again, it sounds like it's more expertise and not a whole lot of labor assistance. So again, I, it doesn't appear from what, you know, through the discussions that it's terribly onerous.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so I would make the motion that we forward a letter of support to the Watershed Society so that they can apply for this grant.
Thank you. Second, Counselor Parslow, discussion? Counselor Parslow?
I made mention of this paradigm shift around our capital asset inventory. I would like, if I don't operate in my, our colleague Duncan on the floor here, but just to share what's going on in another municipality. Could you, would you share with me about Manny's?
Sure. Yep, so through your worship, this is something that Emmanuel Machado, who used to be with the city of Dawson Creek, is quarterbacked, I guess, for lack of a better word, in Gibson. It's something they've taken on and it had to do with their water supplies where it originally started, I believe, and, and just protecting that natural spring that they were utilizing. They weren't utilizing water treatment at that time and protecting all of the pieces of the environment that filter and, and move and protect and et cetera, bring that water through. But essentially it's capitalizing those natural assets and building budgets and, and building policies and programs around those capital natural assets because there's a value in, in having them essentially. And they started with their water supply and, and they've built from there.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Any further discussion on the motion? We send a letter of support? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Sorry, the Christmas tree light-up and the first to the South Peace Royal Men's Association who have taken this on as an annual event to help our community celebrate and enjoy the Christmas season in its way that we kicked it off. So obviously we really want to extend our appreciation to all of the executive and members of the South Peace Royal Men's Association who have done this for us and from community people now who are, last year and this year again, have volunteered and given us up a Christmas tree. And this, last year was an amazing Christmas tree and this year I think it's even better somehow, but it's been very, very positive. And so want to extend our appreciation to everybody who's been involved from that end to help us put this thing on. And then on Friday night of the Christmas tree light-up, and it was a cold, wintery night in Dawson Creek, but the downtown was full of people and kids and music and fun and different folks there enjoying the evening and kicking off the Christmas season in such a, a great way. And they had a lot of fun and...
Santa came.
Santa came. And it's really magical how that happens down there where the kids go down and they love to see the Christmas tree light-up. And so last year, I think it was last year or the year before, we couldn't get the lights on. Well, this year they came on. But they might have come on a little early.
So we counted down to Santa Claus instead.
But it was such a fun night and it was such a great evening and appreciate those that were able to come out and give out some candy canes to the kids and the kids really love that. It's like something special about that they really see the evening kicking off. So anyway, it was a fun night. Thanks to everybody and thanks to the Royal Men's again for helping us make that happen because we couldn't do it without them or we, it would be another line item. Counselor Schuman?
Do we know where that tree come?
Yes, from Travis and Greeks. No, Troy and Rochelle Greek, Grant Gannon's, Rochelle Gannon, Tom in Maryland. So it was from their yard, no, in town.
Up on 96.
Ninety-third.
Ninety-third.
Yeah. And it just, like last year, I think Vern Broughton gave us a tree and it was just too big. He got big on them and this is a big tree. This is a big tree.
Was it like just planted in their front yard type of thing?
It was, yeah, right in their front yard. No wires, no lines to worry about.
Nice.
It was easy to get at and I guess they were just tired of having it.
Well, it probably hid their whole house.
Well, a big tree will suck up a lot of moisture and so that's hard on the lines to get them.
It, it affects the lawn under those trees, so that might be part of it.
So it's sad to see a big tree like that come down, obviously, because it's a lot of years, but it's a great tree downtown. I'm worried it's going to pull bings down. Counselor Jevakov?
We just reminisce on the days when we did, we put that tree up with Steve's Picker Service. We had a small picker truck and a trailer. And if you went by on Sunday when we were putting the tree up, we had a 45-ton picker and a five-ton knuckle boom, four-wheel-drive truck picker and three Zoom Booms with man baskets.
Yeah.
It's got, there's enough iron there to do quite a bit of work and lots of volunteers and, and companies that volunteer their staff and pay them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went, I went down to the bank that morning and, and I was standing in the inside of the bank material watching it. What a big production. I was quite impressed with all the big things and...
Yeah, it's a big deal, right? It's a big deal. Thank you. Thank you. That's it for Mayor's Business. Diary? Nothing?
Nothing to update, your worship?
Consent calendar? Motion? Counselor Parslow, Counselor Schuman? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Strategic priorities?
Provided in reports, your worship?
Question and answer? Anybody? Media? So we're on to Committee of the Whole Reports and so we'll begin with, is Marcel here?
This is Richard. He's on his way.
Okay, we'll move on to Director of Corporate Administration. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, Counsel.
Thanks to have you here.
Excuse my voice, I have a bit of a cold right now. So doing my first Committee of the Whole Report as Brenda's enjoying the sunny south. Just a few things to cover off. We've got Corporate Records Management. I did go meet with the archivist, Danae, at the South Peace Historical Archives and we had a great meeting, went through the archives, discussed possibilities of what they might be able to provide to us by way of guidance and scanning, archiving and storage. So she gave me some very helpful information that I'll use when I go through the consultive report once I get it. So that will be very good to work with them. They may take on some of our more important items that aren't necessarily corporate records documents, but we do want to keep them. So there, there is some possibility to have something going on there. Lindsay is on a very well-deserved vacation as well, but provided me some information on their World Under 17. We are expecting steam reports, as you mentioned earlier, in the next coming months, so we should have a good overall economic impact of the event. Gold Medal Game was completely sold out and it was amazing. So I'm, it's just great to see our community and these events on, on T S N and the TV. I was so proud. So we also have, Community Awards are now open for, for voting. So you can go onto the city website. We have Youth of the Year nominees are Jayden Ford, Braxton Goldade, Jayden Mayo and Leila Hingley. And Business of the Year nominees are S.L. Enterprises, Uniglobe, Peace Energy Cooperative and the Dawson Co-op. The Entrepreneur of the Year nominees are Claudette Huber, Jessica Holland and Cynthia LaValle. And Citizen of the Year nominees are Cynthia LaValle, Jaclyn Johnson, Stu and March Flynn, Crystal Robar, Dale Bumstead, Candace Remiak and Meredith Thornton. So that is open until November 27th on the website if you wish to go in and vote for these people. That's it.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you. Any questions for Cindy? Thank you, Cindy. Next, we'll move to the CFO. Morning, Adam.
Hello.
Welcome.
So things are much the same as my last report. I'm going to move down to the notes, using notes section. So just talking with your utilities person, how to make things better, what's going on. And we're two years into an eight-year project to replace all the water meters with wireless reading capabilities. So what this will do is increase accuracy of our water reads and timeliness of collecting data, which will in turn result in better water billing, which people liked. And on that better water billing, we're working on shifting people towards using paperless billing, like e-billing. Instead of getting, sending, us sending out mail, you get the bill. We'll email it to you and you can pay it through whatever which ways you want. Apparently there's 500 or above 9.6% of our utility accounts are under that method. And I've been looking at strategies to increase that because with every paper bill we send out, there's a cost component and a time component and the risk of it also not making it there due to counterfolks. With e-billing, it's, it's a much quicker cycle and a more direct link. It stays within the electronic world. My last report for today?
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Jevakov?
So this e-billing, you know, I think is great and I use mostly e-billing, but the problem with the city one, you're required to come into City Hall and apply for it. You can't make it any more difficult than that. There's got to be a better way, like for example, an email or a phone call or a text. You know, having me come down to City Hall specifically to apply for the city to save money by sending me an e-bill instead of a hard copy. The city has to have some skin in it, you know? If you want to save money, and I agree, and I'm part of it, but you have to make it easier for me. Like I don't have to, with the bank or with my credit card, it's a simple phone call.
So the intent is not to, to make it onerous. The intent is, you know, convenience factor for yourself and, and opportunity within the city as well. as well. This is one of the things that I've challenged Adam with as he's come to the city and CFO is to take a different look at some of the processes that we do and how we bill and how we, we move things forward and maybe grab a hold of some of those opportunities that are out there, some low-hanging fruit and make some changes that are going to be efficient and provide a better customer service for the community.
The rest of the world is on e-billing.
Yeah. It's not new.
It's a good time.
Yeah, it's a good time.
The, um, thank you. The wireless readings, and so we've had a couple of situations over the years where we've had customers who have been either vacant or away and I see now we can, you can electronically monitor that from the street or somehow. Is there some way, so I guess, I guess my concern is you still have, is there a way that people who are, we could get a warning somehow that showing a particular homeowner or a particular residence has got an issue because they've got an exorbitant amount of water usage in a one-day or two-day cycle?
Yeah, so, and Kevin, I know you've dealt with this a little bit as well. Kale, our utility, she, she already provides that warning and right now, we're working on shortening that timeframe. But in most cases, we've warned the resident that this is happening and that there's, you know, consumption higher than normal. Kevin, maybe talk a little bit about.
Yes, through your worship. With the change to wireless meters, the process will be that we still need to go out basically on a drive-by to collect those reads. But there's more data within that that will show us something and as Duncan alluded, our utilities clerk is constantly looking at for anomalies within the reads that we get. As we get more of these meters installed, and I believe, my understanding is, is once we're at a point where we have all the meters installed, we'll be able to read it in a different fashion that you could, opposed to actually having to drive around, you might be able to have a central antenna, let's say, at City Hall that will be able to read these. And then you're starting to get into the process of where you're able to get more frequent data and you can set things up. So if you start to see water continuously running from a meter, it'll send, you know, an alarm essentially to say that something doesn't quite seem right, things like that. So that will enable us as we, as we move along this program, things will, there'll be more options open to us for those types of things.
Yeah, I guess the, for me, the BC Hydro is an example now with the smart meters have a program you can sign on to, My Hydro, and you can see your account, you can see your daily consumption. But I just, I guess for me, that's the concern, right? It's after two months of somebody getting a $4,000 water bill, it's too late. I'm just wondering if there's some way to be able to, we have a norm within our daily consumption where if somebody's instead of normally using 20 cubes a day or 10 cubes a day, they got 200 cubes, is there, is there, does that, does that meter, new meter give us the ability to monitor and put into that algorithm of how we receive information electronically on a daily basis? I guess that's.
Yeah, I don't, and Kevin, I would say we're not there yet as we get all the meters in. That's where we're going, but we don't have the ability to do daily reads just yet.
Okay.
But we're going there.
Yeah, good, thank you. Thank you. Anything further for Adam? Thank you, Adam. I see the Staff Sergeant here, so we'll call in Sergeant Richard. Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Welcome, good.
Well, this month's report is kind of a good news, bad news report. As far as resource changes within the detachment, we're losing a couple of constables here at the beginning of December. We have a couple of corporals or NCOs that are also, are going to be leaving soon. We just don't know when. And replacement, we're getting a recruit. Constable Puffer should be arriving here around the 29th of December with his girlfriend. They actually requested Dawson Creek, so they're excited to be here. So as far as for calls for service, they haven't fluctuated too much as has the mental health-related calls. Some good news, we haven't been called to any drug overdose files for October, so that's good. And we've arrested two people that we think are significant players in the truck thefts in the area. So for the month of October, those numbers dipped and so far, they're significantly lower for November, the first half of November by the time I wrote this report up. And I guess in closing, you heat this short. As we all know, the Christmas tree is lit, the festive season is approaching. And just like to remind everyone to be careful when shopping, to avoid leaving packages and goods in plain sight in vehicles, make sure that the vehicles are locked and that they're secured. And if you're going to drink, drink responsibly. And there's many alternatives to drinking and driving and we all know what they are, so there's no sense herping on those, so.
Thank you. Questions, Counselor Parslow?
Staff, staff turnover?
Yes.
I'm just thinking to myself, you know, every, seems every month we get this report, somebody is leaving. So I'm just wondering, how many people have left this detachment in 2017 or are planning and in the process of leaving? Do you have a ballpark figure?
Let me think back here. Constable Jones has left. There's three that were identified to leave, it's just a matter of house sales. These, these two constables are leaving the first part of December. Their houses are for sale and one of them's actually not leaving detachment, they're just transferring to North, to the traffic services.
Traffic.
So it's, she's still going to be within Dawson Creek, but just not part of our detachment. Yeah, Constable Jones was the last one to leave and the other ones who I identified prior to that, it's just a matter of house sales, so six.
And the total detachment complement is 20?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. So is that for other communities in the north, not, I don't expect you to know this, but this is what I'm thinking, is that pretty average or is it above average or what? Do you have any sense?
I don't. I don't, sorry.
I should add that it is, sorry through your worship, that the people that are relocating are leaving for promotions. They don't have the ability to go lateral, I don't believe?
In some cases.
At this point, yeah, and so, yeah. So the majority are going for promotions in different positions. They're not, yeah.
That's the difference, that happens everywhere.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Sergeant Richard?
One curious question.
Sure.
One of my stool board chairman uses, I have a curious question. Did anybody from this detachment go down to Habsburg or?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's a long drive or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming in. Report from our General Manager of Community Services. Good morning, welcome. Thanks to have you here this morning.
Sorry, General Manager, you're away, he's on a much-deserved vacation as well. So good morning.
So was it that he's on a much-deserved vacation, so you're here?
I'm a girl.
I think you deserve a much-deserved vacation as well.
Thank you.
Any shots you'd take, shots I have good for me?
No, that was at Barry. That was at the General Manager.
I think he's in Newfoundland, isn't he?
Yeah, visiting his family, it's their Christmas, so it's good to see his grandchild, so it's good. So we'll just kind of go through some of the stuffs of the parks. Had another successful season. The Dawson Creek Disc Golf was also successful in planting a number of trees to increase the number of obstacles and vegetation at the DC Golf Course, located at Barbary Park and Chamberlain Memorial Pioneer Parks. And management would also like to thank all the park staff for all their effort this summer. They did a great job and they're very happy with how the parks went. With facilities, the arenas have been really, really busy the last little while. We hosted the Girls' Jamboree, Hockey North and Dreams Come True, and we just wanted to put in there, we talked to the president, Sheldon Wilkinson, and four girls have joined minor hockey from the Girls' Jamboree, so that's very exciting. As well as the Dreams Come True, the 10 participants that were in Dreams Come True, they are also joining minor hockey and we gave them the last of their equipment on Friday, so went to go see them skate and that was very exciting and they're all very happy. The parents are very thankful for that. We'd also like to just thank with that Dreams Come True, there was so many people that helped us make that happen. KFC Opus were instrumental in helping us fit the kids with equipment, organize the equipment, go on the ice and it's just great to see a group like that come and help us out. So we want to thank Terry O'Dwyer and his group. The RCMP was another key group that came and they, and you can see on the video, the Dreams Come True, they went and participated with the kids at Central Middle School and played hockey with them. So that was really good and then they come over and then they were on the ice with their uniforms. And so we, that was, that was also key. And they also helped us with the U-17, they came in their surge, so Nancy had organized that as well. So very special thank to Nancy and the group at RCMP. Boston Pizza was another key part with the Dreams Come True, they provided, they came down and gave the pizza to the Dreams Come True participants. Their family came and gave it, the little kids were the ones that were giving the pizza to the kids, as well as he has paid for 10 tracksuits for those Dreams Come True kids so that they can have the same tracksuits that everybody else has in Dawson Creek Minor Hockey. And he doesn't want any recognition for that, but it's just something that's amazing. Our community has so many wonderful people, as well as Ryan at Canadian Tire. He was amazing at helping us get the, get the equipment. We also worked with the Mozz from Griffins and then we had to get some more equipment on the Saturday before Dreams Come True and that was at Canadian Tire in Fort St. John. And Andrew and Laura Lurige also helped us get equipment at Ernie's Source for Sports. So those are all key things that helped with, with that. As well as we had the Hockey North group as well and lots of thank yous with that information. This past weekend, we had the Old Timers Tournament as well that was hosted in Dawson Creek, so the arenas have been really busy, which is nice to see. We'll go on to Sustainability, they hosted the Catalina Dinner October 25th and she was very happy with the outcome of that. And their goal was not only to provide some education to keep the community, but to make it fun for the community and support the participant, participating restaurants who made the effort to shut down a couple of TVs or lights. So congratulations and bringing rates goes to Mr. Mike's and Brown's Social House. And then with the safety, we just want to kind of talk about them. What they're doing is he wants to talk about how do you have a successful safety program and how are we going to accomplish this? And he said it's by identifying our desire of results through framework, leadership and commitment, which will further enhance the culture and mindset of the health and safety programs. So those are all things that are happening with, with us. Any questions?
Counselor Schuman? And Counselor Parslow?
So I did get to see Mayor Bumstead sent us out a link and we saw that Hockey North video. I haven't seen the Dreams Come True video yet. Is there?
We can get you a link for that.
Send me a link for that or send us a link for that?
I definitely can send that, it's awesome.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Thanks.
See the mayor ball? Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, under the Operational Strategies head in Departmental Fire Hall feasibility report presented to council, when was that report presented?
That was.
Through your worship. That, so there was a report to council in which council-directed staff included in the 2018 budget and so we will have a further presentation on that, I believe December 4th. So, yeah, it indicates that a report was presented, that's a report I presented and I think that was presented last year.
Last year?
Yeah, I believe so.
So that's.
Didn't get a second or, that's why I remember it, the first time.
So, oh yeah, I remember that.
Now you remember, yeah.
I know, thank you. So that's coming forward in the.
Should be December 4th, yeah.
In the budget as a.
Yeah.
An item for possible action.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Roger.
Curling ring slab, how are we going?
The curling rib slab, what we have is it, the original thing was supposed to be for October 6th and so with the, they're moving into November 28th, they're going into the Attana MS Center and following their tournament. The expectation is that they will be moving in early December into their, back to their Dawson Creek curling.
So, Counselor Parslow?
At present time, no, I.
It was just moisture that was there on the, the cold wind and I think they got that sort of.
Yeah.
So some time ago, I raised the issue of signage for the new sewage dropping spot.
Sanne dump.
Sanne dump, thank you. Somehow the word sewage drop.
Yeah, I was going to stop you right there.
The sanne dump.
I was worried where you were going.
Which has now been augmented with potable water. And I actually spied this signage on 118th Avenue. So my question is, how would people know how, that it's, there is one in that part of town if they were driving on, in from the metropolis of Poo Stoopie to the city of Dawson Creek?
You're a little ahead of yourself, that would probably go to Kevin.
Am I, I, let's see, I'm confused with this new organization, I didn't know whether.
No, so Kevin can answer that.
Through your worship, my understanding is that there is signage on 8th Street to direct traffic down towards.
There's signage on 8th Street?
My understanding, yes, that's, because we did put up signs, I believe we have some at 8th directing it down 115th towards Sanne Dump. We also have some on 116, I believe, at 3rd directing it that way, so there are a few signages. I'll double check, but that was, that was my understanding.
Well, I, when I went to pick up some water, I did see the, what's that avenue by?
That's 116.
Thank you, I was two hour, 116th. I saw that one, but I hadn't seen one on the main highway. So there's one on 8th Street.
Anything further for General Manager of Community Services?
No, we're just going to, just so you guys know what we're working on in December, we're going to be working with the sports field users. We do our annual meeting with them, as well as we'll be working with the arena leases to be working on extending their lease and getting their input on the arena leases.
I just want to add one comment and it's to our city parks crew or who are, I call them, I don't want to say this with anything but utter respect, our tree guy, David.
Yeah.
So I never have received as many compliments from visitors, people in the community about the amazing job that our planters, flowers, hanging baskets, and it was continually all summer, what a great job these guys did. And David and his crew do an amazing job of making those things come to life and they're spectacular and they were this year. So I'd really like to express my appreciation because we got it, I got it continually from visitors, from outside the community as well as from inside the community, how great they were. And he and his staff and crew did a great job.
Well, passing on, we'd hoped that he was going to be able to come today to accept the two awards, but he's away this week, so that would have been a great way. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll pass it on to his manager.
Thank you. The tree guy, he's amazing.
That would be chapter six.
And now we have our report from our General Manager of Development Services. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning.
Good to have you here.
Glad to be here. A couple of things, snow. Yes, here we are.
What are we going to do about this snow?
I know. So we had a fairly good event there over the last 10 days. Crews hired equipment, did a great job getting it all cleaned up. We finished up Saturday and then it snowed on Sunday and it's going to snow some more on Wednesday, I believe. But during the last event, we, we had our crews out, we hired an additional sixth graders with another six pieces complimenting those graders. I think things went pretty good. Couple of days, crews and equipment, hired equipment were able to get over just about every street in town minus the downtown, which we started Thursday night. We had the usual issues that come along with it. We had some driveways that got plugged in and we had to go back and touch up and stuff and that just comes with some of the hired equipment and just some unfamiliarity with a few things, but still, I think probably an allowable, allowable loss, so to speak, to, to get it done as quickly as we did. So things looked really good on Saturday. I was very pleased. So right now, we're, we're back out. We got about 13 centimeters of snow yesterday, which doesn't kick us into, into our policy and then we're supposed to get more snow on Wednesday. So I think if we do get what proves out, then we'll in turn probably hire some equipment again to augment our crews and get it cleaned up. So that's what's happening right now with the cool weather as it's cooled off to this 20 below, things are very slick, so everybody needs to be aware. Temperatures dip, things get icy, so we've got crews out handling that, so. It appears so far that we're going to be into a bit of a. So it appears so far that we're going to be into a bit of a, bit of a snow repeat, snow repeat system here for the next little while. So great for the ski hill, great for, you know, people that are recreating in it, but challenges for our crews, so. Yeah. 10th Street Bridge, someday this week, we will have it open to traffic. Their crews are just finalizing putting in barriers and a few things, then we got to get it cleaned up. So I don't have the day yet, but we'll know more in the, in the next day or so exactly what day we'll, we'll be opening that. We'll certainly get some information out through social media, just to let people know. Something to be aware of is, of course, we're still in a bit of a temporary mode. The bridge deck is concrete. We won't have any rig mats, so that'll be fine. The roads leading up to it are gravel, which will be fine as long as everything's frozen solid. We will probably have some challenges come spring. As things thaw, we may have to, you know, do some regular maintenance or may even have to close early, depending on what happens. But at least for the next number of months, we will have access across that. So that's good. And yeah, once, once the weather turns around in the, in the spring, early summer, we'll have to close it down and finish off the project. So, so that, that will come. Christmas tree light up, just something, just as you mentioned it, it made me think, and we've had some internal discussions. We're in the process of replacing the traffic signals downtown with some new poles as we chip away at some of those. You've seen new poles downtown, we're kind of dealing with the worst ones. That intersection, we are going to be replacing the traffic signal. So what I've asked my staff is to look into something a little more structural that this tree can be tied off to, because currently the light standards it is tied to is not ideal. We found that out about 10 years ago when we had a windstorm. So anyways, that's something that we are, we are moving forward with to, to ensure it's just something that's just a little bit better than what we got, so. Other than that, any questions?
Thanks, Kevin. Counselor Parslow?
Concerning 10th Street Bridge?
Yes.
I understand what you said. That's good and understandable. Again, in my mind, when there's significant piece of infrastructure, we should have an reopening event, I think, because it's, it highlights where a major portion of public tax dollars have gone to improve the infrastructure. So I just want to throw that out. I think we should, at all times when there's significant expenditure like that, have some opening ceremony or whatever. That's, that's just a personal opinion, but it's something I think we should consider. The tragedy in Fernie reemphasized, in my mind, you know, the good decision council made as it relates to the refrigeration plants at the Curling Ring Memorial. Any comments about the fact that we still have, we have one plant with ammonia, I guess, at Encana? Is there any plans of changing that to Freon? And because I, anything, the safety sort of gets, hits us all, I'm sure, right? Where there's a loss of life or accidents. So I'm just wondering where that is in the staff's perspective.
So I'll, I'll answer that question. So we're coming on a 10-year milestone at that facility, and as part of the capital plan this year, you'll see some exhaustive work on that plant where we have our ongoing maintenance and we have our regular checks and we have the systems in place and procedures in place to monitor the plant and, and provide that maintenance on the plant. After 10 years, you do a little more exhaustive work where you start pulling some of the components apart and checking those areas. It is an ammonia plant at the, at the event center. It is not utilized as much as, as a regular activities, you know, where our memorial or our kin. But we'll be going through that this year on our 10-year milestone and we'll come up with a capital plan. I mean, essentially, once we have a better idea of what that lifecycle is at, where it's at right now, I could put forward a plan as when we'd be replacing it. It's expected that there's going to be very little wear and tear on it, just the amount of use that it gets. They cycle it monthly, they test sample the brine monthly, they, they do their procedures. But this 10-year milestone, we'll go through exhaustively and, and we'll have a better plan. And we'll be able to tell you exactly when we expect it'll need replacement.
Thank you. Counselor Roger?
I just have two. Master sewage plant, like we've done the, the trunk line and a few other things. I just wonder, is there, what other things does staff have on their radar as part of that, that sewage plant? And then the other one would be, because we were talking about flood mitigation, the drainage master plan, I think we're going to be seeing that soon too?
Yeah. It's good you reminded me of the flood, that's why I have Alex here, sorry. So on the sanitary sewer master plan, the big pieces that were kind of those first big ones, where is the trunk line done, chamberlain done, and then east of, or sorry, west of 17th over towards campground is done. There is a number of smaller pieces still in the plan to, to upgrade, you know, a block here, two blocks there, upsizing, replacing and things. So that's, that's an ongoing, that'll be ongoing for the next probably five to 10 years to, to chip away through that. And the storm sewer or master drainage plan, we will be having consultants come and present that plan. We've just, it's just been finalized. We have them scheduled to come to council and present that and give an overview of that. So that will be the next month, within the next month, we'll have them here to do that.
So we'll know roughly before budget considerations?
Yeah. That was, that was the push, is to try and get it in front of council. Just again, it's all part of that consideration to see the overall impacts and what, what's out there, so. Yes, Alex is here, she's going to give a quick update on the OCP and where that's at, and also the flood mitigation work that we've started. So I've asked her to, she's spearheading.
Can I ask a question about the drainage?
Yep.
Can I just ask one quick question about the drainage? I'm assuming that's not, would not, if the, the work entailed in that would not be funded through our utilities, because it's drainage, that is not a utility.
That's correct. So storm drainage is, is funded through general revenue?
Thank you.
Mark, you had a second question or are you done?
No, he answered both of them.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, good morning.
Morning.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Nice to have you here.
Nice to be here. So I'm just going to give an update about the official community plan and where we're at, what you guys should be expecting over the next few months, and then the flood mitigation and where we're at. So with the official community plan, we've done an official staff review with Urban Systems and they've incorporated all of our initial feedback. And we will get a copy this week, which corporate administration will review for inconsistencies and just make sure that it's in line with our current policies. And then December 18th, we'll be doing a land, our treaty land entitlement and Indigenous Community Relationship Workshop, which will focus on treaty land entitlement settlements and how those can affect Dawson Creek and beyond in 2018. So this discussion will lead into some of the policies in the OCP and how council can build strong relationships and maybe some economic opportunities will come out of this. And then at the end of that workshop on December 18th, we'll have a discussion with council just about timeline for, to review the OCP, because I know we're coming on to Christmas and we don't want to have you reading this very large document over your Christmas holidays. So just be prepared for that. And then in talking to Urban Systems, we should be going to first reading if everything goes according to plan in mid-February. So things are moving along there. Any questions about the OCP?
Thanks, Alex.
Okay, and then with flood mitigation, we've kicked off the process with our consultants. And on Wednesday, we're doing two events. One with government agency stakeholders, just to set the stage and figure out as a community, where's our baseline? And then we, in the evening, we'll be having a, just setting the stage workshop with the community. So we've sent out letters to property owners who were, are within the flood plain and who have been affected by flooding in 2016. And the main goal of that workshop is just to let them know where our process is at and how we're going to be engaging them over the next few months. So no new information will be presented at this workshop. It's just to really let them know, we're here, we're here to hear your concerns and this is how you can get involved in the future.
It's in my calendar for both events. Do you want us there for all of it, or would it be better to be there for the evening session?
I think that's up to you guys. The morning event is going to be more technical aspect, because we're bringing in provincial agencies. And I think the evening, we're going to be having a workshop with the public in the evening, just talking about, you know, what it means when a flood happens and how it affects and what parts of the community are important to you. So I think maybe the evening workshop, if you, would probably be a better.
Okay.
But you're welcome to come to both. We'd love to have you.
Good. Thanks, Alex. Questions for Alex on the flood mitigation?
Just the First Nation Treaty aid stuff, this workshop you said, workshop for who?
It's just going to be with council. And Urban Systems is just going to be putting it on and just letting you know what is coming down in terms of the treaty land entitlements and how that will affect communities in the north.
Thank you. Thank you, Alex. Great job. Appreciate it. Counselor Parslow, sorry?
I have additional questions.
Yep. Counselor, go ahead. What's his name?
The GM.
General Manager of what?
Almond City.
What is the number of kilograms per person per year, solid waste that we have generated in this community?
I did know that number probably last year.
I know, you did. I've mentioned it.
I don't have it right now.
You can't remember what you told me this last year?
It's this, it's a big number.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we certainly get that for you.
Could you, could you give us that?
And send it out to council, yeah.
I remember the number.
So kilograms per person per year.
Year, okay.
Would you have for supper on Sunday?
No, no. Can you do something about?
It's technical.
No, I just have the material sent from staff around, you know, this, this matter. And I remember it's, I was surprised how low it was compared to other municipalities. So I'd just like to know what it is, because I read that the ministry has a target for communities. And I'd like to know how close we are to that target.
So we're, we're talking specifically residential customers? Or are you talking?
All I'm reading, let me read the entire, so you, the ministry has set two provincial targets related to solid waste for 2020. Specifically that the municipal solid waste disposable rate should be lowered to 350 kilograms per person per year. Okay? That's what I've asked. What are we now? If you could find, sure the?
Yeah, we've got the data.
Yeah.
We can track it down.
And then this, of course, there's the other one relates to organics in that waste, which is a, close that and show the next one.
Now, Piceville Regional District have, because they are accountable for the solid waste management plan for all of us in the region by legislation. And I know that they've done a recent audit of the Bezbro and Northeast landfills for measuring organics as mixed in terms of the solid waste outside of the recyclables. And the, it was crazy to me how big a percentage that organics made up on that initial audit. It was up in the 45 or 50% range of organics as a percentage of the solid waste that's going into the landfills. It was, I, I couldn't believe it was that big a number. I wouldn't have believed.
The ministry document says you've got to intercept that, because that's the main producer of methane and all that stuff.
So, but we can get into it. Certainly the Regional District have been doing a lot of work on that as well, so. Thank you.
Kevin, I just have one question really quickly, it just tagged me, was the water sales, we were selling a bit of water this fall of our reclaim through primarily to Encana. Has that finished off? And can you give us an idea how much they ended up taking in that recent poll?
Again, sorry, too many numbers in my head. Encana, they were pumping again. I don't know if they are currently. I haven't heard anything through Devon, so I'm going to assume no-no's is good news. So that means either things are going really well or that they're done. I've seen recently the truck fills and the reclaim have been busy again. And again, we go through periods where there's nothing and then, you know, we'll have a couple thousand or more cubes going out of that. But I'll get an update on Encana and get that out as well.
Thank you. Counselor Jekka?
I just had a question on the, the treated water. So Shell has a contractor, they have the first dibs on 30?
400 cubes?
3400.
Of the reclaimed water.
So what if they take 3500? Do they have to pay the 250 a meter or 250 a cube for the 100 meters?
Yeah, so through your worship, to date, I'm not sure if they've taken more than, than 3400, but I believe the contract is, is that they get dibs for first 3400 and after that, I believe that they, they would.
It's my understanding.
I'll double check. I'll double check on that.
I honestly don't remember in reading that agreement. I know they have first dibs on 3400 and, and then anything above that we could sell. So I'm assuming that, but that's a good point. We'll, we'll get an answer for that.
Yeah. Lots of questions.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
This is the opportunity to ask questions. And again, this may not be within city staff's purview, but it's something that, pardon me, and you know, we all owe a lot to the economic activity of the oil gas industry in our region. But I've always been concerned about air quality. I want to know, was there an incident that had to be controlled by an incredible flare just south of Dawson Creek, just south of the airport? I've got video of it, I've got photographs of it. It was something I've only seen once before, and I saw it once coming back from Fort St. John at Taylor, at the plant there, and they did have an incident. I imagine the thermal units, et cetera, emitted at that instant, the site I'm telling you. I think it was Monday night, last, last Monday night? I can check the date on my photographs. It was just incredible. Did any, none of you others see it? Okay, I'll show you photographs of it. It's incredible. I wondered if Encana had an incident they were controlling?
Yeah.
Because it does affect our environment.
Counselor Roger?
I was just going to say, coming back from Fort St. John on Monday night, it was, it was, when you reached the, over the Tower of Purcell, the light was actually really, really cool that night because of the temperature and where everything was. So it looked like it was just, the lights were just streaking straight up. So I think that maybe those things were just a little bit bigger, that particular anything.
Anything further for Development Services?
This week.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
And so that's question, or sorry, committee of the whole. I, just before we recess to close, I didn't, I didn't miss one thing on my mayor's business that I just want to touch on very quickly, that I attended the Dawson Creek Athletic Association Annual General Meeting on Wednesday night or Thursday night, I can't remember which night it was, but?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. So it's the 85th anniversary of the Annual General Meeting of the Dawson Creek Athletic Association. And again, such a, such a really important organization in our community that have done really great stuff and golf course and ski hill and on and on and on in terms of some of the initiatives that they've been involved in over the years. And so I just neglected to pass on our appreciation to the executive Alvy and all this executive and members that were there. And, and Alvy had a list of the past presidents over the last 85 years, and it was amazing to see the names on that list of really great community leaders that were part of the Dawson Creek Athletic Association over the years. So my apologies for forgetting to put it on my list of mayor's business. That's that. And so a motion to recess to close, please. Counselor Rogers, Counselor McFadden, all in favor? Opposed, carried? Thank you. So we'll take five minutes to recess.